Well, Dr. Morrison's not here. She was first on the agenda.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to call the meeting to order, the September 22nd meeting of the... It says I'm on. Can you all hear me now? No? Two, three. Testing. Testing. They're telling me my mic's not on. Testing, one, two, three, now. All right, we will call this meeting to order, September 22nd, 2016. Are there any public comments? Mr. Gates? Dr. Morrison, you're just in time. You're first on the agenda with a special report, a special meeting. Welcome.
Thank you so much, so happy to be here for our chancellor's first meeting.
Thank you. I'm so excited today to share a report of an activity that we've engaged in for the past five years. On Saturday, September 10th, on South Campus, we celebrated the fifth intergenerational community conversation. I'm going to ask Dr. Jordan to come and help me share that with you. And I think we have a few guests from your campus, Dr. Jordan.
Good evening, President Appleman, Chancellor Giovanni, members of the board. As Dr. Morrison said, for the last five years, this started during my first year, in a conversation with Dr. Morrison, we wanted to find a way of representing the different generations that come together around Tarrant County College. When you think about our classroom, you think about the different generations that are there. We are very much unlike institutions like UT Arlington, where the average age or the age ranges of students are somewhere between 17 and perhaps 22 or 23. On South Campus alone, our students are anywhere from the age of six in College for Kids to 66 and above. Grandparents who want to study, or as they put it, they want to learn the Facebook. So they come to us because they want to connect with their grandkids. And so it was really inspirational when I had that first conversation with Dr. Morrison, and we agreed that we would start these conversations. Well, five years later, and here we are, still having those conversations. This year, thanks to the awesome connections that Dr. Morrison has in the community, we were able to have as our keynoter none other than Dr. Joel Fitzgerald. Well, can we still call him new? The new chief of police for the city of Fort Worth. He was really quite engaging and inspiring for our students and faculty who were in attendance. I'm going to make this brief, but I want to have, first I'll introduce some of the students who co-sponsored this event. The co-sponsor, as far as student organizations go, was the African-American Student Organization. And representing that organization here are Trenton Rose, who is Executive Board Advisor, Brandon Anxton, who is AASO President, Arianna Jackson is here as well, and Cheyana Kelly. And I'm going to ask all of them to stand so that you can recognize them. We'll hold the applause until a little later. But I'm going to ask Trenton to talk a bit about his experience with this year's conversation.
Welcome, Trenton.
Thank you, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So I've been having the privilege to be able to attend this event for four years in a row now. And I can definitely say it is an honor to be there because you're not only learning from your peers, but you're also learning from other generations. And because we're able to be in the workplace with them and we're out in the community with them, I think it's very important to have conversations and truly get to know one another. We might not always get along with one another, but that's not our goal. Our goal is to be able to respect one another and to be able to get the job done. And so that ICC is the way to do it. We are able to open conversation. And going into the sixth, I just want to make sure that people know about it, and we get more people to come out, and we have bigger and stronger conversations so that we can have a great conversation.
Thank you.
Let's give the students a round of applause. I also want to express my thanks and appreciation to Dr. Larry Reddow, who is way in the back there somewhere, way...
Stand up, Dr. Reddow.
Yes. And Ms. Gladys Emerson. And Dr. Raymond Fang, all of whom were instrumental parts of making this conversation happen. So Chancellor Giovanni, we were proud that you were able to join us, and we hope that members of the board will be able to join us next year this time, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is your photographer still here? Oh, there he is.
Let's go take a photo.
With the faculty sponsors, come be photographed with the students. And Dr. Jordan, you too.
We're going to go behind.
Oh, they're going to come back here.
So what Dr. Jordan didn't tell you was, this was kind of already on the books when he came, and he inherited it. But he's been so gracious, and he not only accepted it, he embraced the concept, and he has nurtured the concept. So we appreciate that. And we're throwing out hint, hint, hints that we want to take this district-wide because we think it's a very important effort. It originally started because my first year's topic was before I passed the torch. And so you know that's going to happen someday, not tomorrow, but anyway. We're ready. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Thank you, thank you, great job.
And we didn't call Ms. Jackson's name. Mr. Sean Jackson, thank you. And thank you all, and I told them it was classes first, so I didn't want anybody to skip class to come, but I did want them to come. Thank you. Not only has Dr. Morrison been busy these last five years, she's actually served our district for 40 years. And she was not able to be at our back-to-school breakfast, the chancellor's breakfast, so I promised her we would remember those 40 years. And if you'll come join me at this makeshift podium, I have some goodies for you. This makes it legal, testifies to your time. Here's your pen.
Wow.
And a special gift. So when I originally came on the board, a picture of every board member hung in the foyer of every campus and in this building. And this was the official photograph that was taken by the district's photographer. So that was taken in 1976, right after I was elected. Thank you. And that was all real. Thank you, thank you so much. So glad I'm going to hear another three years with you.
And Gladie, look the same.
Thank you. So I have one other thing, you want me just to do it now?
Sure.
Okay.
So, since I celebrated 40 years, and I'll wait a second, can you possibly get this up on screen? Okay, I'm sorry. I was supposed to bring these for everybody?
So I'll pass it. And you can go to the website and follow the instructions. So you know that in April, I celebrated 40 years, and I was asked at the beginning of the year to join the board of the Tarrant County Black Historical and Genealogical Society. It was one of the entities that our fourth chancellor, Irma Johnson-Hadley, was one of the founding members of. So I felt compelled to accept, and I did. So while Ben was in the hospital in July, I missed a board meeting, and they named me to be the chair of the 40th anniversary celebration, which the 40th will be April 22nd, 2017. So what could I do? I had to accept. So the theme for that year is 40-40, celebrating 40 years of the past to ensure 40 years in the future. So I go to Baker Chapel AME Church, and we are at the center of our community. We're partnering with Tarrant Churches together to open a ghost center at our church for the South Side community, Ben-Zach-Gwen, Illinois, Humboldt, and in that area. And the dedication was set to be for September 24th. So as we started to plan that, became aware that September 24th is a grand opening date for the Smithsonian's National Museum of African-American Art and History. So I said, okay, so we have to include that in our celebration. So on this Saturday, beginning at 8:30 at Baker Chapel, we will have a program where we'll produce a live simulcast of grand opening, since we all can't be in Washington, DC. And at 10 o'clock, we'll open the Ready, Set, Go Center. And at 11 o'clock, we'll go across the street to the Lenora Rolla Museum to celebrate jazz greats from Fort Worth who have made it on the national scene, and we'll have a jazz brunch. Rochella Parks is the renowned saxophonist, so Rochella Parks and Friends. So I had these enough for everybody, but it's kind of been a busy day. I left them in my car, so I'm going to ask you to pass this along. You can go to blackhistory.org, it's a website, and look at it. But I want to pass this particularly to the presidents. I don't ever want you all to think, the Celts, that you're out of the loop, because wherever I am, you're always invited to be. So thank you for letting me share that with you. If you can come by, it's free, open to the public. If you can't come by, you can go on to the website and send your good wishes, hint, hint, ching, ching. And it'll be a great six to eight months of celebration. And I've reserved a very special place for our 40th anniversary gala, which will be the Trinity River Campus Action Rooms, April 22nd, 2017. So mark your calendars. Thank you for your kindness.
We thank you for your service to us and the greater community. All right, we'll go on with the business of the board and ask for the approval of the minutes of the meeting of August 18th. Motion to approve, Mr. Greenhill, second, by Mr. Heed. Any comments, additions, or corrections? If not, all those in favor, aye? Any opposed? The consent agenda, two items, excuse me, consideration and approval of Attachment A of the Tarrant County College District Investment Policy, and consideration and approval of tuition recommendation for continuing education classes. Motion to approve the consent agenda, Mr. Heed, second, Dr. Patrick. Any comments, questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Giovanni and the Northeast Campus Strategic Operations Overview, and I believe there's a copy in your folders and on your screens. Is it Dr. Gobin presenting?
I'll have to go like this then. All right, thank you. Dr. Giovanni, Mrs. Appleman, and members of the board, it is a great pleasure to share with you an overview and update from Northeast Campus. We've had a busy year working on a strategic operations overview. This is something that resides between the district-wide strategic plan and the ground level operations. So I have several folks here with me who contributed as authors from different sections. And so when we get to our Q and A section at the end, these folks will be happy to answer any questions that you have about particular sections. I have with me Dr. Linda Braddy, our VP for Academic Affairs, Dr. Magdalena de la Teja, our VP for Student Development Services, Jerry Zumwalt, VP for Community and Industry Education, Dr. Antonio Howell, our Dean of Humanities, Dr. Linda Quinn, Chair of Communications, Dr. Caroline Hamilton, our Coordinator and Chair of Professional Development, Jack Herod, my Assistant to the President, and Jeanette Jacobs, our Director of Academic Affairs. And then we had several other people who contributed. So all of our work really developed out of a groundswell of input that we got from a Needs, Goals, Barriers, and Solutions survey. And this was couched in Needs, Goals, Barriers, and Solutions about improving learning and student success on campus. And you see the four areas that manifested out of this as the major focus for us, as well as the past year, we've spent talking district-wide with all kinds of internal and external constituents. And so you'll see an easy crosswalk in what came out of that with what came out of the folks on campus, on faculty and staff. We had a great response rate and a lot of substantive dialogue afterward. As well, we've had a lot of dialogue about alignment to national and statewide efforts. I had the pleasure of serving on AACC's 21st Century Commission back in 19... or, excuse, 2011 and 2012, and the resulting work from that. And then we've looked, of course, at the Texas 60 by 30 and all of those goals, and this all aligns very well. So the sections that you'll find in this strategic operations overview include a student support plan. So this looks at all of the different areas and different ways that we can support students across campus. And I won't read these all to you, but just looking at the end of the list, we're currently establishing a Director of Student Recruiting so that we can really do more cohesive outreach and focus on student success prior to the students actually arriving on campus. And that's really going back to the root of a contact with a student and developing those early relationships, and then seamlessly bringing them into the campus. The Student Support Plan also includes the work that we've done considering a Student Enrollment Services one-stop area. And I know there was a study done that was depicting a quite costly option to do that on campuses within TCC. We have rigorously evaluated our campus, and we believe that there's a renovation possibility and just movement of some different things within the student building, and we can create that dynamic on campus. So that does need a considerable amount more work, but we've worked about six months and have a good plan on that. Another great part of the student support is looking at the pathways model. This is a very substantive shift for us culturally in higher education. When I worked with AACC's Commission, this was one of the major focus areas. It wasn't created by the Commission, but it was really acknowledged that a lot of colleges around the country were doing a lot of work along these lines, and that that was really the future blueprint of what we would look like. So I'll walk you through this just a little bit. We're looking at student entry and all of the engagement to help students get on the right career path. But that begins with the career clusters and identifying that. So last year, TCC adopted the 16 Career Cluster Model that is prevalent at the national level and the state of Texas level. And so that's really the crux of getting into the right area. It's not to prohibit students from changing to a different major, a different career path, but it's really to structure and support and help them plan actively. So they can still take other classes, but the more focused that they have, the earlier in their studies, the higher the success rates go. So you'll see some different components within this at different levels, and we'll go into more detail on that at another time if you like, but I just wanted to show you some of the work that we've been doing to depict this. So if folks are not familiar with it, what is this? Pathways is a career cluster structure within which there are multiple and distinct career pathways. The academic pathways, and these terms sometimes get confused a little bit and commingled, the academic pathways are also part of the model, and they exist inside of each career cluster and career pathway. And then the educational and training programs, as well as all the enrollment, advising, really anything you do with a student can be developed within that commonly understood structure to help the students navigate more freely. When I worked with the AACC's Commission, one of the commissioners said, "We've done a beautiful job achieving our goals in community colleges. We've democratized education, we've achieved it, we're there." But the challenge that we have is, the wonderful work that we're doing is done in such a way that we've built an eight-lane expressway into a swamp. And in our colleges across the country, we need to align ourselves better so the students can see the path through the college and to their ultimate goals. And so there's a lot of work we're doing, obviously, for that. The difference from the past is, the cafeteria model was where students would often choose a college, choose a major, and then start selecting courses. The career focus and the life goals would oftentimes come later, and by doing that, students more often change their mind. The pathways model really puts the planning, the life goal focus, the career goal focus... The pathways model really puts the planning, the life goal focus, the career goal focus, college major and the like first, then looking at the college and selecting courses. Now, of course, students will not follow that lockstep. They will just choose the college and come to TCC. But we want to really talk about that life goal, your purpose, your career ambitions, and then look at the educational components that will get you there. So if we look at the distinct career pathways, there are hundreds of them within this cluster structure. You see at the bottom, Health Science, that's the career cluster. And then you look at all of the dynamics, including job growth, wage data, things like that. And then you can develop that educational pathway, going through that filter of ESL, Adult Basic Ed, and Developmental Education if needed. And then in this particular dental hygienist case, we have a great program on Northeast Campus for that. If the goal is a TV producer, a student might need a bachelor's degree, but they can come get an AAS in radio, television, and film along the way to that. Nurse practitioner takes a little bit more education, but building this stackable approach allows a student to get out and start wage-earning on the way to that ultimate goal. We've even developed a song to go with this. We're trying to communicate in multiple ways, multiple channels, and so you have the song lyrics in your handouts there. But the lyrics depict how you're supposed to go to college. My folks are deathly afraid now, I'm going to play this video, but we'll skip that, that we will provide the link for you if you want to actually watch the video of the song. We had great fun making it, and yes, that is a real miniature horse that belongs to Karen Harrell on our campus. And those are the lyrics. And so we modeled after an existing tune, but we rewrote the lyrics to have some fun and depict the pathways model. Another section of the plan is the Learning Opportunities Area. So this is the academic plan, and it's blended with CIE and undergrad academic area. Jerry Zumwalt and Linda Bratty co-authored this section in conjunction with all of the folks in their area. So there are a lot of goals, and how do you become the best? And we found nine major areas that we're focused on in 2016, 17. So I want to highlight a few tonight. One is establishing a fourth division, so we can really develop and grow new programs in some of the high-demand, high-growth areas. And then, of course, building a Center of Excellence for Visual, Technical, and Performing Arts is, it's not listed last because it's in low importance for us, it's actually very high importance. But you know, as we understand, the board authorized the planning and design work sometime back, and so we're excited to continue working on that project. We believe we have a lot of program expansion opportunities. In particular, the computer technologies, an example would be 3D printing, certainly any of the computer science-type areas, we think we can continue to expand those, and the other STEM areas on campus. Entertainment industry is a really good fit with Northeast Campus. As we've discussed at great length, those are areas we're already focused on, and we think we can just continue to expand those. Healthcare management and healthcare business is a growing area. That's an area that we've looked at TCC, and we're not certain we're doing enough there. We think Northeast is positioned with our business and technology areas and the couple of healthcare programs that we have on campus to really dive in and accentuate healthcare management job creation for our students as graduates. And then entrepreneurial and economic development is another area that we feel can be a great focus for us. So I mentioned the four division structure that we're looking at, and this is an interesting realignment. We're excited about this. We spent several months working on this. And if you notice, each of the divisions that we're projecting are aligned to the career clusters. So we've really, I'm really happy with the team and really excited at the work that's been done. A lot of colleges around the country are trying to do pathways and make that conversion from a cafeteria model. But what they're doing is, a lot of them are focusing on their marketing, and they're focusing on their recruiting and outreach, which is all good. But a lot of the real work happens with the academic program alignment. So it doesn't do to just say that you have something, you really need to show that and depict it all the way through the student experience, and that's what we're trying to do here. So you see a Communications, Arts, and Entertainment Division, and it focuses to the arts, AV, Technology, Communications, and then Hospitality and Tourism-type career clusters. I won't read them all to you, you have the information in the report, you can read that at length. But I think the thing to highlight here is the new division, Technology, Health, and Business. And that's merging our business and technology programs, along with the few health programs that we have on campus. Those are the high-wage, high-growth kinds of careers. And so we would like to bring a structural focus to developing more curriculum, more programs in high-wage, high-growth areas for our students, and we feel like we can do that very well. Another section of the plan is all about communications. A lot of folks say they want to improve communications, and we're trying to really do it. And that means bringing resources. So we've dedicated a full-time position to supporting communications on campus, both on campus and in relation to district offices and other campuses. We're doing a lot of internal campus-based communications right now. We created these Frequently Asked Questions Brochures to augment the Information Station Project and other things that we do on campus to help our students navigate. Another big one, facilities. You're all very, probably painfully aware of the renovations that are currently underway and the prospective renovations on campus. And so Northeast Campus is going to celebrate the 50th anniversary of the campus in 2018. And so it has been around for a long time, and there are a lot of major needs in facilities upgrades, a lot of them underway already. We would like to acknowledge and really thank our facilities team. Nina Petty and all the folks on campus and the team that have, they have just worked round the clock for both emergency response things when things break, but also nice renovations. You see a few of them up there. And then if you look at the bottom right, take a look at that photo, that's a simple thing, it doesn't cost much, but it's just power washing the sidewalks. You know, power washing things on campus and just sprucing up the campus, so it's really starting to look good, and we're doing some good things. We mentioned, or I mentioned, rather, a few things here that are underway or that are pending. And then the Performing Arts Center is obviously a major project that we're working on. We're diving into business plan development for that particular project, and as a part of that, we're looking at all of the revenue that supports that. We're looking also at a recommendation, we're right now forwarding this to our facilities team, to redevelop the library building into a library-learning center coffee shop. We feel that we can maximize the space in the library and have our swing space question partly answered for the NACB remodeling or rebuild, as the case may be. So there's a real need to gain swing space, and we feel that we can do this with the library project. As well, as part of the business plan work that we've begun to do, we're looking at sources of revenue, both that will be generated directly by the facility, but also the general operating. And so we've done some analysis, and we find that there are, obviously, the tax-based revenue from Northeast Tarrant County and the Northeast Campus directly-generated revenue. There are a couple of things not included in these numbers. This does not include auxiliary services, such as any revenue from the bookstore, or Subway, or things like that. It also does not include a section of Fort Worth. The city of Fort Worth comes out into the northeast part of the county, but we did not include that because we couldn't break it out. So I think the main point to make is that the folks in campus, as far as employees, the leaders in the community and the citizens in the northeast part of the county are happy to support and fuel growth and development across the entirety of Tarrant County College operations. But we're also very excited that after 50 years, there needs to be, and hopefully will be, a lot of focus to utilize those resources to rebuild the campus and take care of those infrastructure needs. The library, coffee shop, and learning center, I want to talk about this a little bit, just because it is so key to some of the other things that we could do on campus to gain space, and actually will help us not ask for new buildings or something later on as other buildings are renovated. So what we're talking about doing is improving student success and student support through a modest renovation. And if you look on the left side of this, you see all of the different learning support areas that we think we can congeal into the library square footage. So if we do that, along with the coffee shop, and really make that the absolute learning hub on the campus, the students don't have to then go around campus and try to find all these support areas. They're currently scattered all over the campus as they've been brought on one at a time over the years, and so we'd like to congeal those. There are a few we really need to keep where they are right now. The map will show you a little bit of the layout of the campus, and if we're able to take the NACB, which is the middle circle, if we're able to take a lot of our learning support areas, which take up a lot of square footage there, move them over into the library building, that NACB, we know, is on the docket for either a remodel or a complete rebuild. And that building has a pretty significant amount of square footage, it has about 25 classrooms, as well as all the learning support areas. So if we can create a positive domino effect with the library building being maximized, then we can envision NACB perhaps as a future mathematics center. We can, mathematics is currently housed in NTAB up at the top, N-T-A-B, I should say, and we call it NTAB. But if we can create this positive domino effect, we can design a 21st Century Math Center along the way with NACB, and then gain a substantial amount of square footage. We're estimating 12,000 to 15,000 square feet could be just gained purely from doing this as we do these remodels. NTAB does not need a remodel, it's in good shape. It's mostly classrooms and computer labs. So lots of things going on with facilities, it's an exciting time for us. Another section in the report's about improving effectiveness and efficiency, and we have some major efforts underway. We know that process improvement has been identified in all of our district conversations also, we're very attuned to that, so every time we find one, we just try to get in there and help improve it for the campus and for the entire district. So we're really working to synchronize our efforts across the district wherever possible. Another section is Professional Development Plan. And again, while we have a district operation to do this, Northeast Campus has nearly 1,000 full and part-time employees on just Northeast Campus, so we're a pretty big operation just in and of ourselves. So we're setting up a Professional Development Center on campus where we can really actualize and work hand-in-glove with Terry Mushala and the Teaching and Learning Academy. And Dr. Caroline Hamilton is heading that up, along with Jeanette Jacobs and her team, providing support. So we're really excited about this particular effort. And I want to wrap up here with just a mention here, but we do have some gifts for you. And one of those is a book. This is a book by Mr. Rick Smyer, who we've done a lot of work with on the Second Enlightenment and his collaborative group called Communities of the Future. And so he will be a keynote speaker at the Heart of North Texas Business Conference on November 4th. You all are cordially invited to attend, we hope you can make it. It's a great conference every year, and Rick will be the luncheon keynote for this. The book is called Preparing for a World That Doesn't Exist Yet. And it is quite intriguing in looking at these components. We have several folks on campus who've really gotten excited and engaged in this, and we're being asked to be a national leader with our campus partnering with other colleges, and certainly, of course, other campuses within TCC, to be a national leader in Communities of the Future. So in your packet, you have the book, you also have a copy of our Frequently Asked Questions Brochures, we found those are very handy. And our token gift to you, we have an award called the Cowbell Award. Our annual award for the highest-performing employees called the Branding Iron Award. And so we created this last year called the Cowbell Award. It's been great fun, you can ring them if you like. It says on the front, Northeast Campus Cowbell Award, exemplary innova, I'll get my glasses to read it, I'm sorry. Exemplary improvement in student success. And on the back, it says, "High expectations plus high support equals student success." So we award these when individuals or teams do a phenomenal job, something that really stands out, and we do Cowbell Awards to acknowledge the great work, and people have had a lot of fun with them. We gave these out at our fall kickoff to Nina Petty and the entire facilities team, not only for their facilities work, but about a year ago, their team had over 90% contribution to the foundation during the campaign, which was just amazing, and it was exemplary for our campus to take a look at. So we wanted to highlight their great work and thank them. And then, last but not least, the quote that I like to use a lot, and we share on Northeast Campus quite a bit, is from The Ghost Dance by Alice McLaren, and it says, "If all hold to the dream, the magic will be strong. Be strong to call back what we love the most and of the new, keep what is good. Weave old and new in harmony." And as we welcome Dr. Giovinini to the TCC family, I think this quote is very appropriate, that we need to weave old and new in harmony and make great things happen with great traditions, but also wonderful innovative progress. So we thank you very much for your time and attention, and the team will be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Board members, any questions?
Congratulations on just such a wonderful, wonderful sheath program that you presented to us, everything that's going on there is just...
So exciting. And it occurs to me that the timing is perfect, because with the public high schools coming on with their endorsement plans, students are now creating when they're eighth graders, then they're going to be very accustomed to this pathways approach to their education. So it's perfect timing to coincide with House Bill 5.
Yes. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Dr. Morrison?
Just want to say thanks. I love the plans, and I know we're all going to work very hard with you to accomplish them. So we'll be well on our way during your 50th celebration.
We might have to have you chair that.
She's getting quite a reputation.
Well, I had a lot of great friends in Northeast Tarrant County when I ran in 1976, so that campus is also very dear to my heart. Thank you.
And I'm halfway through the book. He thought I needed a little preview. It's an interesting book, it really is.
Yes.
We appreciate you sharing it with us, and my grandchildren will love the Cowbell.
Their parents might not.
I'll be evicted from the house.
Congratulations, that was wonderful, y'all. Thank you for all the work that you put in to compiling this information for us. I did have a couple of questions, though. What kind of milestones do we have in place to kind of track the progress that we're making to the plan? And then the second thing I wanted to find out was, and not only just to track the progress, but also maybe establish some best practices along the way that we can share and continue to use in the future. And the second question I have is, I think we, you mentioned something about, let's see, the Director of Recruiting that you're going to be bringing on, and will they be working with students with special needs as well, and looking at what we can do to make sure that we're preparing them for entrance into college?
I'll take the second part of your question first, if I can, and the answer is yes, that person would work with everybody and would really become a communication conveyor to the resources within the college to help students with any sort of goal, background, or need.
Great.
And so we'll work on that. I'd like to turn it over to one of my folks on the team, Magdalena De La Teja was just standing here, and everybody else stepped back, so we'll ask her. She's done a great job with the task teams and has chaired one of the steering teams where we do the project-level work. That's where we monitor our progress. And so, Magdalena?
Good evening, and Chancellor, it's such a delight to be here at your first board meeting. I congratulate you, and I'm happy to have you here, and it's wonderful to get a chance to see the board members. And Ms. Ayala, thank you for that question. One of the things that I love is data. Practically anyone who knows me here at Tarrant County College knows that, right? And even snicker about it sometimes. Yeah. So one of the things that I would share with you as far as a benchmark is that this year, for the first time, a milestone was that we were able to offer the MyPlan, the first part of the MyPlan software, so that students could look at the career exploration. We offered it to all first-time in college students on our campus. That was a major milestone. And we want to build from there, because what we want to do is be able to use that information to help the students begin to really think in terms of their pathways. And so that work will help us whenever we have all those pathways. And so that work will help us whenever we have all those pathways clearer for the students, and then our academic advisors will be working with that information. That's just only one example of that benchmarking. We also were able to do student planning with our new Evolution software. So now, over 7,000 students, right, Dr. Born, at college-wide now have a student plan. In our campus, we were able to do that for all of our first-time-in-college students. So that's another benchmark. I could go on, but I know that you have other things to do.
Thank you, Dr. De La Teja. Mr. Heed?
Yes. We hear a lot about pathways, and there's different pathways, pathway models and so forth. Northeast is doing this, and I congratulate you. It sounds like absolutely fantastic plan. Is this something that is kind of considered a pilot program on Northeast, or are the other campuses doing similar? Or how do we—
The—I'll go ahead and answer that one. The work that we're doing is really tightly interwoven with district-wide efforts. So we have an enrollment task force. I've worked directly with that and several of the folks on Northeast. And the career clusters model adoption came out of that work in conjunction with the Celta last year. And then—so all of the work that we're doing really fuels it. I couldn't claim to know what's being done exactly on each of the other campuses, but people are all working on the pathways effort in different ways. We've probably done a little bit more, at least from what I think I know, with looking at our academic division structure and really substantively aligning both programs and curricular areas within the clusters model. So we've done a lot of work with that, and then just depicting it and doing those sorts of things.
Okay. Are there any predictions as to completion rates or maybe the number of classroom, the number of credits that a person takes when they graduate by going into the career path? You know, lowering the 90 down closer to 60 credit hours, that kind of thing?
We've not projected anything like that yet. In my own career experience, leading a team in Kentucky in a college, a much smaller college, so it's a little bit different scale to look at, you wouldn't want to compare it one-to-one to a large, multi-campus institution like TCC. But doing this type of effort, we were able to improve the fall-to-fall semester persistence rate from about 37% to almost 62% in three years' time. So that is a tangible result that came out of a pathways-type effort. But we have not made a particular projection on anything.
Okay.
Thank all of you for coming.
If you don't mind, I'm Jerry Zomala. Just to address the question about the special needs. As it would be, we actually have a program called Pathways, which had 16 students enrolled last year as special needs students. This year, 44, and is run by Ms. Yolanda Hughes. And they have a very active outreach program to the ISDs and a transition program so that students are able to come in and take courses. A lot of them are interning in offices on campus and learning life skills. So it's a very good program.
Thank you.
And just let me also add, Ms. Ayala, that we have a strong Student Accessibility Resources Office on each one of our campuses, and we are always working to bring in those students with special needs that want to take college-credit courses. So we have a very strong program. In fact, Dr. Morrison knows our team well because we've worked with her in reaching out to the community in regards to special needs populations.
Thank you.
Yes. As you remember, last year, Fort Worth put on its first Mayors' Disability Conference, and all of the campuses and the staff from TCC were just very instrumental in helping us make that a success and showing other people in the county how to do that. And in fact, Tarrant County College was awarded the top-level award because exemplary inclusion throughout the workforce and the student population, accepted by Dr. Lynn Gates-Black.
Yes. And thanks to all for mentioning those aspects to your original question. That's what that director position will help navigate the students to those resources.
Would any of the others like to comment? Dr. Howell?
I'm Dr. Antonio Howell, and I agree with everything that Dr. Goldman said, but there's also that human factor and collaboration among faculty. Because we had to do this work together, we got to work interdisciplinary. We got to work with other—because if you don't, you stay in your division, and you don't look at science or business. But in this work, we had to look at all, and we had to work together. And it was so good that we could have said, okay, we made our goal, and we're out. We're finished. Many of us said, we want to continue. We want to continue supplemental instruction. We want to continue processes and procedure. We are continuing developmental education and also professional development. So the faculty get to work with faculty, staff, student, everybody. I think that's great.
Thank you. Would you all like to come have your photo made to prove you were here?
That is awesome.
Yeah.
It is.
Yeah.
Good work.
Good work.
We'll move on to committee reports. The Governance Committee met to plan the agenda. Institutional planning. Mr. Heed?
Institutional planning committee met on September 13th. The first thing that we discussed was to modify our bylaws to more accurately reflect what we're all about. The second thing is, we got an update on the TXU building, and Mr. Hernan gave us an idea of what it might cost to fix it, ranging from $1.2 to $3.2 million, just a mothball. So he's not through with his analysis, and we've asked him to look at some other options, such as maybe just boarding up the building and those kinds of things. And then we looked at the RFQ for the Performing Arts Center, and the committee with discussions led by Dr. Giovanini. The committee recommends that selection of a design firm for the Center of Excellence, for the visual, technical, and performing arts, be delayed at this time, a temporary pause, to gather more information, as Dr. Goldman was referring to. So on behalf of the committee, I move for the adoption of this recommendation.
Because it comes from the committee, it does not require a second. Are there any questions or discussion? All those in favor of the recommendation, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Is that the end of your report? Okay, thank you. Dr. Patrick, Community Outreach Committee. We just made that up.
Sounds good. This new committee is in the process of getting organized, and we look forward to having a meeting in October.
Thank you. All right. We'll move on to action items, starting with number nine. Consideration and approval of job order contracting, construction, trade services agreement with Facility Solutions Group for exterior LED lighting for access trail and overflow parking area on the Trinity River Campus in the amount of $167,477,044. Motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Mr. Heed? Seconded by Dr. Morrison. Ms. Petty?
Good evening, Chancellor, Madam President, and Board of Trustees. This first item is for the Trinity River Campus, excuse me, for an important item to secure—for safety and security to our students and community that use our walkway for our access trail and our overflow parking west of Henderson. And this will provide regular LED lighting that is similar to the lighting that we've installed at our other campuses, and we're hoping you did approve it. So we appreciate that. Is there any questions?
Well, the motion's on the floor. Can now take questions or comments? Discussion of the recommendation from the facilities? All those in favor, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number 10. Consideration and approval of indefinite delivery indefinite quantity service authorization agreement with Quorum Architects to provide design services for space renovation of District Multipurpose Center in the amount of $217,764. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Greenhill, second.
Second.
Dr. Morrison, Ms. Petty. This is what we refer to as the Riverside.
Yes, it is. Last year in September, we purchased 76,000-square-foot warehouse located at 5450 Riverside Drive, which is in the Fossil Creek Business Park, with the intent to relocate district staff, approximately 78 of our district staff. In your summary, you have a breakdown of how they organize. Most of these staff have been in temporary facilities around the campus, mainly at the Northeast Campus. I also wanted to remind you, and I'm not sure if the summary actually points this out, but if you recall, in previous years, we leased a warehouse facility, and the intent was to not have to lease property as much going forward. So the intent was to move this operation, and right now, it's temporarily housed at the Northwest Hangar. Thank you very much for temporary, but I know we're eager to get that out so that we can do more educational functions up on that space. So that's a part of this. Again, there would be 78 personnel that will be moving to it. We'll have a little extra room once we do it. And what you're approving is Phase 1, which is the design of this with the intention to come back to you with a contract to do the construction. We did look at 23 properties over a two-year period until we came up with this property. It's really a great property. We got a great price for it. And what it was designed for was a pharmaceutical mail-order facility. And for us to use it and put personnel in it, we have to modify it. It has a concrete slab. It needs our connections for IT. We need to make it ADA compliant. We need to put restrooms in it, some grading issues to get it ready. So we will be coming back with you—to you for a contract for the construction, and we're hoping you improve this very important—
Disconnected.
Something happened to your—
Am I back on? I'm green. I'm sorry.
What she was saying is there will be—and it's in your material—they're coming back in February and then again in April for additional—
Hoping to have everybody relocated probably late spring, early summer, is I think when we'll have everybody relocated. And we're eager. This has been a long in planning, and we really need to get these folks more in functional space, that they can be much more effective. They are going into an open concept, which is great because that really does enhance collaboration and efficiency versus building out offices. So it's all an open-floor plan. So any questions that are not answered in your summary?
How much do you envision this is going to cost us?
Overall?
Yeah.
Approximately $13 million overall, with the cost of—we purchased the facility for approximately six, a little over $6 million. And then with the design and the construction that's coming up, it'll be about another $6 million. And that's in line with what we've paid for it. It's actually more efficient than having to build, for instance, a new building, as you know.
Ms. Ayala, you had some questions. Have they been answered?
Yes, I just did have some additional questions relative to what are the considerations we have looked at for this property? Because if realizing that there's going to be some things we'll need to do from a technology standpoint, so I'm wondering if there's some other usage, utilization for this property that we don't have to invest the six mil—additional $6.4 million to renovate it. What other things can we put in there besides—is there—can it be used for some other facility of some sort, for storage or whatever?
I'm sure we could use it for some other, but the pressing need is getting these 78 people into permanent space and relieving the space that they're in at the Northeast Campus to do more educational uses. So they're tying up very valuable space at our Northeast Campus that could be used in a different way. To answer your question directly, the intent of buying this facility was specifically to relocate the warehouse, the cabinet shop, this district personnel that goes with it. So that was really the intent of the purchase to begin with. There will be extra space available, and we've had some discussions with our CIE folks in terms of maybe expanding some programs there. But candidly, we haven't crossed that bridge at this point. We just—this has been so long in the making that we just need to get this personnel in there, which will relieve space at the Northeast Campus to do swing space in a warehouse that we've already built out bathrooms and we're ready to go with. Also, this personnel shares space with our early college high school students, which isn't really the best thing to have, those professional staff in a high school environment. So we need to get them out of there. So I'm not sure if I really answered your question.
The personnel that are going to be based there, what—do they work at a specific campus on a regular basis, per se?
They're mostly at the Northeast Campus. Again, our warehouse, we shifted over to the Northwest Campus. And in your summary, you can see specifically how many personnel are moving per each group, and mostly those are at the Northeast Campus in this early college high school facility. And again, this was—we were hoping to have done this a couple of years ago—
Right.
—and not cohabitate the space.
Well, based on what we purchased it, and then when we make the renovations and what it's going to cost us per square foot, how does that compare to what's, I guess, standard or whatever the word—I don't know what the word is, standard or—
It's definitely less than building a new building. As you know, we built two early college high schools recently. Those buildings were 30,000 square feet approximately each, and they—the whole, all-in-budget for those was $13 million. This is an 80,000-square-foot building. It is on a concrete slab, so we're—and again, what I like about the concept here is that we're not going to build out offices, which would cost quite a bit more. We're building out an open-floor plan that, again, is going to promote productivity and efficiency with the people that are working there that really need to work together. So we actually think the building lends itself quite well to the use that we've bought it for. I'd also mention that you, as a board, agreed to purchasing three acres adjacent to this property because we love the area, we love the expansion into the Riverside area and to this park, and so there's opportunities for the district to expand other programs and other things that we might do there that would be in the planning stage.
Okay.
I hope I answered your question on about the usage of it.
I think so.
But it was very much purchased with the intention of doing exactly what we're doing with the building and not doing something else less expensive with it. I know it sounds like it's an expensive amount of money on the construction, and it's a really well-conditioned, good building, but it is a warehouse. It's a warehouse concrete slab that really needs to be adapted to a work environment. And so we could use some of it for the warehouse usage, but the rest of it, even though it's warehouse space with concrete slab, it needs to be converted. We need to get bi-furniture, and we need to do some of the things that I mentioned of rewiring it and ADA-compliant issues.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I'm in favor of this, what I want you to consider going forward, because we did talk about it, it may not be in the minutes, but that wherever we build a new facility, we should consider serving how we can serve the population in that area with learning opportunities. So in addition to CIE, perhaps there also might be some space there for some basic academic courses or call it office business-related subjects. So I would like for all the staff to keep that in mind as you go forward, because I think that area could very well benefit from that.
Yes, ma'am, and we will put that into our planning process as we move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Ready for the vote? All those in favor of the recommendation, item number 10? Please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11. Consideration and approval of indefinite delivery indefinite quantity service authorization agreement with VAI Architects provisioning and critical need session district-wide in the amount of $404,997. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Greenhill, second. Mr. Heed, Ms. Petty?
You got quite a bit of information in your summary, but— You got quite a bit of information in your summary, but for the audience and the public, I think I'll go into, did you have a question, Mr. Greenhill?
When she lets me, yeah. Are we in questions?
Sure.
Okay. So we have this thing called the Tarrant County College District Institutional Plan 211, 212. Is this what we're updating?
Yes.
Or this has anything to do with this?
Yes.
Okay.
Shall I explain?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So in 2012, 13, we did do.
This is what we're talking about.
We did do a collaborative academic and facilities master plan, which isn't normally done. And we were, in some ways, sort of state-of-the-art that we did this collaborative effort together, which was called the Institutional Plan. And that was a full-blown master plan. And so that created 14 priority recommendations, which I think all the board knows about. And most of them are complete, but some of them are ongoing. The first recommendation was the introduction of the Innovation Forums, which everyone, I think, knows about, which is our prioritization model that provides a return on investment with a cross-functional analysis for college initiatives. So that effort has really helped us reduce the need to have to do a full-blown master plan this time, which is a really good thing. Okay, so what we're doing this time is what I would call a visioning effort. And this really supports what we've done in the past. So I hope that answered, but.
Yes.
I'm going to elaborate a little bit more, because I think this is important about why we're doing this.
Yes.
So the most really important reason, I believe, for the district is that we have five new presidents. And they were not, the five new presidents were not around when we did this. Two of them came in kind of at the end of it, but really didn't get to appreciate that whole master plan effort. Dr. LeBlanc was here, and she got to experience the whole darn thing. So that was great. But this time going, we really need to hear from the presidents and their administration that are also very new at the campuses, their vision, and combine with what we have done. In addition to the why of doing it for that reason, we do have the Southern Association of Colleges, SACS, that recommends doing a master plan every five years. And it's our facilities and real estate's responsibility from a physical resource standpoint to be able to update 3.11.1, which is around being physically responsible for our physical assets. So it's really important that we do do this update. But because we're only having to do a visioning, it's much less expensive, which is great. There are new trends in teaching that are causing a resurgence and a review of how we do use our physical space, and I think that's really important. And what this effort is going to do is, the group that we're bringing is going to work very closely, hand in hand with our in-house staff, to review the associated data from the last institutional planning session related to existing enrollments, projected enrollment growth, space utilization, facilities compliance, new program trends, current program review, existing building use, building alternative functions for not only each of the campuses, but as a district-wide. So it's a pretty comprehensive, so this, what we're asking you to do is in two phases, and this is the first phase of it. And we put out a request for interest. We got eight great responses. We shortlisted to an interview of three. Dr. Joy Gates-Black participated with me in sitting in those interviews, reviewing the, what the evaluation, we weren't on the evaluation team, but we reviewed the firms, and we picked VAI, who has partnered with a group called I.R.S. St. Gross, who is a national expert in campus planning and design. They've worked with over 150 campuses, universities, community colleges on master plan, space analysis, and detail planning. And they're very well-versed in this, and they're going to be really the headliner for us. I was really pleased to hear that our new chancellor has worked with them in his previous life. So that's great. And again, this is part one. This will be the data mining is what we're really calling it. Take a couple of months to do, and we're hoping that we can launch our visioning sessions at the campus level after the first of the year. So I hope I answered all your questions.
That sounds great.
Other questions or comments? Motion is on the floor. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 12, consideration and approval of contract with SUL Advisory Services for financial construction services for TCCD Capital Improvement Program projects in the amount of $482,450 plus a contingency of $175,350. Motion to approve? Dr. Morrison, second. All right, we will move on.
May I make a substitute motion instead? I had several questions relative to this, and Nina has been very helpful in answering them, but I would like to make a substitute motion that we postpone this until the next board meeting so we can do some further examination and maybe ask some additional questions.
Move to table.
Yes.
Motion has been made to table, seconded by Mr. Heed. Any questions, comments? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 13, consideration and approval of purchase Oracle database application software in the amount of $3,300, oh, sorry, thank you, Ms. Petty. Motion to approve? Mr. Heed, second.
I second it.
Mr. Greenhill.
I'm Pat Woodrow. I work in the IT division. I'm standing in for Mrs. Sheldon.
Thank you, Ms. Woodrow. Any questions of Ms. Woodrow? All those in, any comments, any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion to purchase Oracle database, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 14, consideration and approval of purchase Cisco SmartNet Service Contract from Flare Data Systems in the amount of $1,249,653.23. Motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Mr. Heed, second. Ms. Ayala and Dr. Patrick. Questions of Ms. Woodrow, comments, discussion?
I have a question. Ms. Woodrow, how often, I think I read in here that this is, we're actually, are we testing the systems on a regular basis? Is that what this is part of, a test service, or is it just a matter of a backup?
This is a three-year contract for our maintenance and support of all of our Cisco systems.
Right.
And we regularly look at our systems, but this is more of a technical support and a replacement. If we have hardware issues, they can come in and help us, and we have direct support from them locally. Not sure if that.
Do they have a certain time, in other words, are there service levels that they have to respond within a certain amount of time by the time?
Yes, ma'am.
When the equipment goes down?
Some of them are within four hours. Some, if a part has to be shipped, they have to get it to a same day, that type of thing.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Other questions, discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 15, consideration and approval of annual renewal of Illution Administrative Software in the amount of $575,208. Motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Mr. Heed, second.
I'll second.
Ms. Ayala, questions, comments?
Is there a relationship between this one and the one we approved, which is 13? They had some of the same companies involved, I guess they're not related. One of them is.
Illution and Oracle?
Well, I mean, one of them is for four years, and this looks like we're renewing, it's not renewing something that related to the one we just approved, right?
They're both software licensing, but one supports the other.
Okay, so we're not, okay.
Right, Illution is the actual software that you see when you log on to WebAdvisor or go into the Collegia or Data Tail Systems. And Oracle is the database software that supports those.
Okay, so we're not renewing something that we're obviously paying for, for it looks like for a long time, okay.
Right, Illution is the, is one year.
Yeah.
And the Oracle is the completion of a five-year, a little bit over five-year agreement.
Thank you.
Question, would you mind just elaborating a little bit about what this software does?
Illution?
Yes.
This is the backbone of the college. This is all of our finances, this is all of our student records, this is the budgets, the general ledger accounts. It's everything that, you know, it's all finance, all student records, human resources, they use the Illution software too. So it's the backbone of the college, and without it, we would not be doing anything.
Thank you for that clarification.
Exactly, it is.
It's important.
It is, it is important. Or we could have a long vacation.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 16, consideration and approval of renewal of McAfee Protection Software from SHI Government Solutions in the amount of $216,770.95. Motion to approve?
Move, second.
Motion by Ms. Ayala, seconded by Mr. Heed. Discussion, questions? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 17, consideration and approval of purchase ParkPlace Server Warranty Renewal from SHI Government Solutions in the amount of $120,554.41. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Greenhill, second.
I'll second it.
Ms. Ayala. Questions, discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 18, consideration and approval of renewal of contract with Texas Industrial Security Incorporated in the amount of, thank you, Ms. Woodrow. Of $150,000, a new contract amount, $716,400. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Greenhill, second.
I'll second it.
Ms. Ayala.
Chancellor Jovanini, Madam President, Board Members, this is the $150,000 budget item that you passed in operations to add so that we can have somebody watching the video cameras and add on some unarmed security guards in the budget process. So we request approval of this item.
Comments, questions, chief? Do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, ma'am.
Just available for questions endorsing the proposal.
Yes, ma'am, it will definitely be necessary when we include the new Code Blue phones, to have a phone system where we actually roll over the additional calls that would come into our dispatch center to non-emergency calls to our unarmed security officers who can address those issues and not top our emergency 911 call takers.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Madam Board President, while I have the chief here, he got invited to the White House, and he's going to be going next week. Actually, the email says you're confirmed. He didn't get invited. To be on a task force that is going to help strengthen community relations between the police force and the communities they serve, so.
Congratulations, Chief Williams.
I just wanted to have that happen.
Someone put in a good word for him. All right, Dr. McClendon, yes, excuse me, with the financial report.
Good evening, Chancellor Jovanini, Madam Chairman, Board of Trustees. I've had a little time to work with Dr. Jovanini, and I was so excited because I thought, we have a person who knows finance well. So I can really go in-depth on my report. So he gave me some guidance, so here we go.
It wasn't to go in-depth, that wasn't the guidance.
So, all right. Okay, so let's talk about revenue and expenses. So August is the last month of our fiscal year, and both our revenue and expenses look like, just as we expected. We will be working through the month of November to be able to do our adjusted entries and with our external auditors. And we will be adjusting entries, like for example, our fall registration that was recorded from June to July. We will be able to move that and record that and realize that in the next fiscal year. We will be looking at expenditures that were benefiting the next fiscal year, but were paid in this year. We would show them as a prepaid, and then you will show them as an expense. Another item to discuss, which just to mention, is property tax collection. This has been a topic that has been in the news just recently. And just to kind of summarize it for everybody, is that the Tax Appraisal District instituted a new software program. And in this software program, it produced little challenges to the rolls. And so the tax assessor and collector has just informed us that since there's been more protest than there have been normally, we will not be receiving all the revenues until these 80,000 refund requests are done. So that we would be, but not to worry, because Tarrant County College actually received more revenue than we had anticipated. So TCC is in a fine position. And when we look at both our investment and our costs, we will have a positive fund balance. And for this fiscal year, we will have a great position, a financial position. So I'm very happy to report that. We can go to investments? Okay, on investments, we wanted to kind of refer, if we look at our beginning balances is $275 million, all right? And our ending balance is $271.5. So there's only a decrease of $4.4 million. And this occurred, we used $24 million from our investment pool. And then we turned around and we acquired two $10 million short-term, okay? And if we look at our total performance, our yield through 831 is .81. And this compares very favorable to the 12-month average T-bill, which is .57. Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Green. All right, thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, Dr. McClendon. You have survived your first board meeting.
Thank you.
And we welcome you and look forward to your report.
Thank you. This is Appleman, members of the board. You have before you a listing of activities and events over the last month or so. Just to comment, and it's more of a confirmation than anything, the ability to get out and meet the community, the campuses and the community at large and variety of events and activities, it's confirmed in my mind that this is one great organization, and you should all be proud of that. The community adores this organization. And so I feel very honored to be able to move forward in the future with folks who certainly have had a very positive experience with us and are committed to us to take us to the next level of activities that we wish to engage. So I'm very pleased, I hear the same song over and over again, how much this college is revered and how much this community really wants to continue to engage and participate with the college. So thank you, Ms. Sheldon.
Thank you. Looks, you can tell from the listing, I don't know if it's on the screen, but the appointments have been many, and the feedback has been very positive. And we appreciate you taking the extra time here in the first month that you've been here to engage with the community and both our district community and in the community at large. I have several pieces of good news to share in my report, starting with the Collegian, and Jamil Oakford is here, our editor. The Collegian has been named a national finalist in six different categories, including best two-year weekly newspaper. They've been named one of three finalists in the Collegiate College Media Association's Best Two-Year Weekly Newspaper, as well as the Best Two-Year Website category. And this is the second time that the Collegian has been, in three years, that the Collegian's been a national finalist in both of these categories. In 2014, they took first place, so we're fully expecting that again. They got a finalist in the best online breaking news coverage, unfortunately for the reporting of Chancellor Hadley's death. They also got three nominations in national awards, and former student Amanda Boyd placed in two categories. One, an infographic for her display explaining the primary election system, and the other, an editorial cartoon, that's probably the same category. Boyd was the only two-year. Boyd was the only two-year student, and only one from Texas, to receive that recognition. And editor Jamil and photo editor Bogdan Sierra Miranda were recognized in the multimedia news story of the year category for their coverage of former Bill, Preston Bill Clinton's visit to our campus. So all of these finalists will be awarded, the, the final naming of the winners will be awarded in Washington in October, and then in Atlanta at a second conference. So we look forward to a very positive report, Jamil, and keep our fingers crossed for you. No, I'm on. Little, little closer. Oh, Dr. Jordan, sorry, we overlooked a new introduction for you. We'll, I'll pause in my good news delivery and let you do that.
Well, how about this? I have some more good news. President Appleman, Chancellor Giavonini, members of the board, it's my pleasure to invite you to join me in welcoming the newest dean on South Campus, Mr. Ernest Gines, if he would come join me.
He's not new.
I want to, I want to start by thanking Dr. Bill Coppola for being a generous twin brother and colleague, and, and being so gracious in letting Dean Gines go from Southeast Campus. So he's new to his role as dean, but not to TCC. In fact, Dean Gines has been a faculty member on the Southeast Campus for the last seventeen years. Prior to his appointment, Dean Gines, prior to this appointment, Dean Gines has served for seven years, two tours of duty as department chair on the Southeast Campus in the Department of Information Technology. During his tenure at that campus, he has also participated prominently in several district innovations and programs, including or achieving the Dream Initiative. He has received the Chancellor's Award for exemplary teaching in two thousand and nine. He has been honored twice by Who Is Who Among America's Teachers. He's also been recognized by NISOD for his teaching in two thousand and three and two thousand and ten. Dean Gines earned a BA in Behavioral Science from the National University, and he went on to complete a Master of Arts in Information Systems and Computer Resources from Webster University. He notes with great pride that he took several years before completing his first master's degree because of, because he was also on active duty in the United States Marine Corps. Thank you, Ernie, for your service. During his time with the Corps, Ernest and his family spent three years in Okinawa, Japan. During that time, he completed a second graduate degree, the Master of Science in Management Science from Troy State University. We're glad to have Dean Gines with us on South Campus, and you should know that his hobbies include woodworking. If you would like to see some of his woodwork, please talk to him about that, and he has a mean golf game. I bet he learned that from Dr. Coppola. Let's hear it for Doc, uh, Dean Gines.
Board, after spending all the time on the Southeast Campus, you know, I have to, with so many fine faculty, administration, especially Dr. Carrier, Dr. Fulkerson, matter of fact, Dr. Fulkerson, when she hired me, she called me, it was seven PM on July fourth, back in oh-one. I'm like, okay, what's going on? So it's funny, I, I received a nice email from her, and she said, are you up? At that time, I says, no, he's a keeper. So I'm like, okay, I'm not sure how to take this, but no, i- it's been a wonderful experience, especially at Tarrant County. It's wonderful, and it continues, especially with all the new additions to the family over the years. It's, with the, especially with the faculty, the support staff, the Faculty Association is an integral part. It really is. It serves that bridge. And Northeast Campus has just touched the tip of the iceberg, but there is more to come, especially on the South Campus. Thank you.
Thanks for getting South Campus in, Doc.
Best wishes in your new role. All right, back to my report. They mentioned achieving the dream, and we have been recertified as a leader college. So Dr. Black, and I know many others in the room deserve a hand for that. And our Public Relations Department submitted a report recently that explains the media relations impressions, the number of hits that we get, and the ad value, and then the total unique impressions of ad PR, which is a whole other language and universe, but Suzanne Groves and her team are to be congratulated for mounting what obviously is a very valuable public relations campaign, and we thank you for making us look good out there. And then we had our thirty seconds of television fame, again, thanks to Dr. Black and her people, as we embrace the orphans from the ITT College, and we have made arrangements for you to see what was on Channel eleven earlier this week.
North Texans helping fellow North Texans now, after an entire college system shut down, a North Texas-based college just stepping in to help. Joel Thomas, live in Fort Worth, to explain how.
Yeah, we're at Tarrant County College here, and you can take a look and see what we're seeing right here. Table after table of person trying to pick up the pieces after ITT closed, and we've seen more people coming as the day goes on, because they're coming from work. There are people who are juggling jobs in tech school until ITT tech closed, leaving them with lots of questions about their futures.
I finished my degree, and four days later, I looked on the news, and ITT is shut down.
They come with questions like, what's this diploma worth now?
That's one thing I came here to see.
They come with financial questions.
And on the sixth of September, we all got emails saying that you're no longer allowed to use your GI bill here.
Which left him trying to transfer courses and funding.
I was scrambling.
TCC is hearing the stories.
It breaks your heart to see that.
And it's giving the students left in the lurch of ITT's closing a one-stop shop to salvage their education.
See, I took solid states, I took microprocessor.
They've assembled experts to look at transcripts and finances.
You know, we have our advising table over here, we have our career and technical education advisors right next to the advising table, then we have veteran affairs.
That's where Ryan Morris is getting help with his GI bill.
Everybody here has basically said, how can we help you? You know, what, what do you need from us? And this is what we need from you. You know, it's been very straightforward.
And the school is trying to find ways to give course credit, even if ITT's credits don't transfer.
Maybe we can do some credits by exam, maybe have them take like a final exam and see if we're able to give them credit that way.
That it's all on me now. I, I have to, to get them the paperwork, and they'll enroll me.
And it's not just students that they're looking for either, it's teachers that they're going to hire as well. And in fact, there's been so much demand, they plan on keeping the doors open here until seven o'clock tonight. Reporting live, Joel Thomas, CBS eleven news.
JT, thank you.
Dr. Black's people pulled that together in a very short order, and Suzanne's team, Reginald Lewis, I think, was Johnny on the spot and got us on the news. That was great coverage, and thanks to all of you who helped make that happen. And finally, don't forget Toro Dash. That's for you, Ms. Robinson.
November sixth.
November the fifth. Go online to get the full details and be there. We're going to go into closed session, but we do not anticipate any action, so you all are excused. Deliberation of real property, section five-five-one point oh-seven-two of the Texas Government Code, deliberation on personnel matters, section five-five-one point oh-seven-four, Texas Government Code. Not so fast, consultation with attorney. Section five-five-one point oh-seven-one, Texas Government Code. Thank you for coming tonight. Not a class.